Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting on Monday, March 9th. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
Dr. Sasan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, in accordance with the State Sunshine's Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting was provided on March 5th to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. And we're going to move into, we'll do the pledge later. We will move into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the body, public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: The matters to be discussed are personnel matter and negotiations. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion to go into executive session? Thank you, Ann.
Second.
Thank you, Chris.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We are in executive session. Thank you. We will return at 7:30.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're now back from executive session. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Dr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Dr. Sasan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Well, now, do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Turning now to the agenda, we have two sets of minutes to approve. The first is the executive session minutes from February 24th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Judy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ann, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from February 24th?
So moved.
Thank you, Ann.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions?
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have correspondence as listed in the agenda. And I would like our acting superintendent to give us superintendent's report, please.
Thank you. I recently received a copy of a cookbook titled Hillsborough Eats compiled by Hillsborough High School's Social Studies Concepts Class as part of their unit Diversity in America that included discussion on the role culture plays in our everyday lives. The students defined culture as, quote, "the behaviors that a group of people share. A lot of things make up culture, including food, language, tools, music, arts, customs, beliefs, and religion," end quote. Their teacher, Ms. Elizabeth Seznak, shared that each student brought in a recipe representing their individual cultures. The cookbooks were laminated by Ms. Melissa Uhas's work readiness class and bound by Ms. Carlin Dunn's applied tech department. The collaborative effort produced a wonderful array of recipe. Can't wait to try some of them, and congratulations on a job well done. I'm very happy to share that 11th grader, Aravind Krishan, received first place as a poster presenter at the New Jersey Junior Science and Humanity Symposium held at Rutgers University on March 2nd. The NJJSHS is an annual research fair that celebrates high school students' novel investigations in science, engineering, and mathematics. Aravind was also selected to present at the national symposium in April. There were over 150 research papers submitted, out of which 75 were selected as Rutgers Regional JSHS contestants. Of those 75, only five finalists moved forward to the nationals. Aravind shared some background on his research with Dr. Feltry, Acting Assistant, too. It's simply amazing, to say the least. And I'm quoting him: "In my research, I invented a method to detect endotoxin, which is the molecule on the gram-negative bacteria at a membrane that causes adverse effects in humans, including septic shock, fever, and death. My test is intended to replace the current LAL assay produced from horseshoe crab blood, which coagulates upon contacting endotoxin. By genetically modifying a rabbit opse to luminesce, I'm able to reduce the cost from $60,000 per gallon to around $2. Eliminate environmental impact and ensure human safety by preventing exposure to endotoxin from contaminated parenternal medicines and medical devices." Congratulations, Aravind. Best of luck at the national symposium in April. Congratulations to many Aravind students who participated in National History Day this year, which is Saturday. As shared by advisors, Mrs. Pat Seller and Mrs. Nancy Patrick, National History Day is a year-long endeavor for participants where they hone their skills in research, working with others, critical thinking, and problem-solving. The students, the following students qualified for the state's competition: Julia Sawers, Laura Weintraub, Seth Viksamont, Liam Rorney, Gavin Grouser, Arjun Jain, Arush Gupta, Rohan Patel. Congratulations to everyone, and best of luck to the students going to states. I know several board members and administrators had the opportunity to attend a performance of Hillsborough High School's, Hillsborough High School Theater's Footloose the Musical over the weekend. What an, my, my whole family came and enjoyed every minute of it. What an outstanding performance and effort by the entire cast, crew, and pit. You still have next weekend to see this performance, so mark your calendars now. I'd also like to take a moment to update the community on the district's preparation should we be impacted with a public health-related closure due to, due to the coronavirus or COVID-19. We continue to monitor information received from the Centers for Disease Control and the New Jersey Departments of Education and Health. The most recent guidance from the Department of Education is a directive to districts to plan and prepare should schools have to close. This strategy would be used to limit transmission within a community, and a written directive would come from the New Jersey Department of Health or the Health Officer of our jurisdiction. It is not a decision the district can make on its own. We are working, administrators are working, and we're actually meeting with the HEA tomorrow, Executive Committee, to develop realistic and reasonable plans to provide instruction and support students. I want to, I want to stress, realistic and reasonable plans to provide instruction and support students. There are many pieces to this puzzle that must include equitable access to instruction for all students, including provisions for special education and related services for students with disabilities. We will share timely information as we develop a plan that best addresses the needs of the students and staff of Hillsborough. Additionally, it's important to note that any day we have a public health-related closure and students have access to alternate, alternate instructional methods will count toward our 180-day requirement in accordance with New Jersey statute. This flexibility applies strictly to public health-related school closures and not to any other type of closure. I cannot emphasize the importance of common sense proactive measures we can all take, such as washing hands, covering coughs and sneezes with a tissue, tissue or your elbow, avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands, frequently and routinely clean and disinfect objects, including doorknobs and cell phones, and please keep your child home if she or he is ill or exhibiting respiratory symptoms, and yourselves home if you're exhibiting respiratory symptoms. The NJ DOE encourages districts to enhance school cleanliness and disinfection protocols. Please be assured that our building-based administrators, school nurses, maintenance, and custodial staff continue to work together to ensure our schools' cleaning routines are maintained. We will continue to communicate through school messenger and on the district website. As always, the safety of our students and staff remains at the forefront of all decisions made. Be on the lookout for a school messenger, perhaps even tomorrow, that we may call for an early dismissal one day this week, perhaps next week, so that teachers have a chance to work together to put a framework in place should we need to close for an extended period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is for public input on the 2021 budget or on the action agenda. We very, very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, when you may speak about any item that is listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. Towards the end of the meeting, there is another public comment period to address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address. Please also fill out the form that is on the table next to the podium in the event that the board needs to follow up with you after the meeting. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public comment periods are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent may address the comment after the close of public comment or after the board meeting. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Would anybody like to address the board on the budget or on the action agenda?
Hello. Leisha Gabrielis Huff Lane in Hillsborough. I was wondering if you would consider adding a teacher or two per elementary school. Last year, our school offered a pull-out class for reading slash vocabulary for a few of the higher-level students in grade one, and it was fabulous. The kids looked forward to it, and unfortunately, with the cuts, this was not available for this year. If you are a detail-oriented person and just don't really like people just coming up here and asking for things, one way that this could work is that, and why it would be helpful and good for everybody, by pulling out a few kids out of the main classroom, that makes the classroom size smaller, so that the classroom teacher could have, be able to focus more on the students who are left in the classroom. And if you added, say, one teacher per, per school, they might be able to hit every single grade. I know that right now we offer reach for basically the third and fourth graders. If they're able to, they might be able to reach down to first and second, but not as much as before. But also, I believe that reach is not specifically for math and reading, and some people, some kids who are, are not able to get into reach are still very high-level, and this could possibly help them. I also know a few families who are leaving the area because they don't have this kind of support for their children. And I know that the teachers in the classroom do a great job to friend training, but sometimes a little bit more would be very helpful. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any board members commenting on the budget? Please.
It's just about an item on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Do you want to do, talk about it now or when we do it?
I'll do it at that time.
Okay, thank you. All right. Then, the education agenda? Mrs. Superintendent?
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows: 9.1, 9.2, motion to approve professional travel-related expenses as listed, and motion to approve overnight field trips.
Can I have a motion to approve those two agenda items?
So moved.
I probably have a comment.
Second.
Second.
Got it.
We'll take the motion and then, yeah, okay. Discussion? Mrs. Stats?
I, I, well, I approve, I'm going to approve the overnight field trips, but I am concerned about the one field trip, the wilderness experience. And it's no judgment against, and I think it's a wonderful experience, but because it takes place over four consecutive school days, I'm concerned about that. And it's just something maybe we can look at as far as policy and practice regarding field trips in general, the impact on, you know, losing four consecutive days of instruction in their classes.
Yeah, I think it would be worthwhile referring that to the Education Committee for discussion. Okay, any other? Okay. Can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the Human Resources agenda as follows: 10.1, 10.13, motion to approve retirements and resignations. I'd like to point out that Kathleen La Court is leaving, is retiring after 17 years as a science teacher in Hillsborough, and Tracy Zebra, lunch aide from Sunnymead, 11 years. Motion to rescind preapproval for extra coverage, and motion to rescind coaching contract. Motion to approve a contract change and a transfer change in assignment. Motion to approve revised leaves of absence. Motion to approve revised sixth-period, revised sixth-period coverage. And motion to approve revised turnkey trainers. Motion to approve leaves of absence. Motion to approve appointments. Motion to preapprove extra coverage and to approve extra coverage. Also, a motion to approve a resolution as listed. That's it.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve items 10.1 through 10.13?
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Ann. Any discussion of those items? Chris?
Just for clarification, it may just be a typo. In the approved extra coverage, 1012, the third entry in the attachment lists three hours per hour, I believe that should be three hours per day, as the, as the one following it is three hours per day? All right, thank you.
Okay, so we'll approve that as amended by Mr. Pulsofer. That's, that what we're voting on, given the indication from Mr. Callahan behind that that seems reasonable. Okay, any other discussion points? Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Thank you. Dr., Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operations agenda as follows: 11.1 through 11.7, correct?
We have 11.8.
11.8, sorry. Okay, we've got motion to approve the monthly financial statement, motion to approve the coordinated transportation agreement with Somerset County Educational Services Commission, motion to approve a change in out-of-district placement, and to accept a donation of $7,500 from Autton Road Home and School Association for the purchase of water bottle filling stations. Additionally, will be, there will be four resolutions: motion to approve a sidebar agreement with the HPSA, motion to approve a sidebar agreement with the HEA, and motion to terminate participation in the Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield of New Jersey Healthcare Plan, and a motion to approve a resolution to participate in the New Jersey School Employee Health Benefits.
May I have a motion to approve items 11.1 through 11.8 of the operations agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Thank you, Dr. Harris.
Thank you.
Any discussion of said topics? Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Thank you, yes. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon? Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Dr. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. We have the enrollment report, fire crisis and drills, suspension report, and HIB reviews as indicated. That brings us to, again, public comments on old business. We very much welcome input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. The first time is at the beginning of the meeting, the second time is now. At this time, you may address any topic. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address, and be sure to fill out the form on the table next to the podium in, in the event the board needs to follow up with you after the meeting. There is once again a three-minute time limit per speaker. Please understand that our public comment periods are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent may address the comment after the close of public comment or after the board meeting. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit, permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Does any member of the public wish to address the board at this time?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Pastor Steve Nash at 121 South Branch Road in Hillsborough, and living in this town for 30 years. Pastor for 39 years, seven children, 14 grandchildren. Two months ago, I was here in this meeting with a comment about the state mandated LGBTQ curriculum. I also spoke about this issue before the state board entrem. My primary point was that parents be allowed to ask questions and make comments in a parent forum conducted by this board, and to my knowledge, that hasn't been done. I called the Board of Education a couple of weeks ago, and the person that answered the phone said that they had no knowledge of such a forum, so I'm going on that. I understand that the LGBT curriculum for, is a state-mandated order passed by the New Jersey Legislature, signed by the governor, but I also understand that each school district has some leeway in how they implement this mandated, excuse me, program. And this is where I believe parental forum would be a good thing. It would give parents the feeling that they're, they're heard, and I, I believe that parents have the primary right to raise their children and to be sure that they're taught what they would agree for their children. I do not believe that's the authority of the state. I, I get approached by many people being a pastor and asked about this issue, and I, and I need to represent those people. I'm concerned that many families are going to choose alternatives by September this year if the, if something doesn't change, or if they don't get some input from you, if they don't get an opportunity to voice their opinions, ask questions. So I think for, I, I hope that we don't lose a, a family from the school district, but that is a reality that's going to happen, and so I want you to know that, and I hope that you would change your mind and have that parental forum. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ryan Pearson. I live at 20 Steeple Drive, and I just wanted to give some kind of response to what the previous speaker has said. Well, I don't have any specific qualms with a parental forum. I believe that if the purpose of this parental forum is to ensure that our state-mandated LGBTQ curriculum is limited, is implemented to a limited extent, I believe that that would have an extremely harmful effect. I believe that the state-mandated LGBTQ curriculum is essential. As a gay student myself, I have often felt that LGBTQ history has been conspicuously left out in our curriculum. Sometimes our sex ed curriculum is not up to par in providing LGBTQ students with applicable safe-sex information, and all this does is kind of reinforce a sense of being different that can really be extremely harmful to students. And while I respect what the previous speaker had said, I believe that if we leave it up to parents to teach their children things about being LGBTQ, it simply won't happen. Often, many, many parents are hesitant to speak about these subjects, or there are many who simply do not want to. I have many peers who are within the LGBTQ community whose parents are either less than accepting or outright hostile, and if the parents are not going to provide them with the information they need, then it is up to the school, because it is the school's responsibility to educate students, to provide them with the information they need to go out into the world, and to foster a sense of belonging. And honestly, what's going to happen if we have this parent forum and the effect of it is to limit the implementation of the LGBTQ-inclusive curriculum, then what we're going to have is just continue the, reinforcing the feeling of differentness among LGBTQ students. So ultimately, we shouldn't be catering to a few possibly homophobic parents who may possibly take their students out of school, when what we know right now is that there are LGBTQ students in our school, and they do not feel their needs are being served, and we are, the board is in a position to help rectify that situation, and that must be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riley's on his way up?
Good evening. Mike Riley, 790 Route 206, Hillsborough. Couple questions, and I know you normally don't answer, but is there a state law that says we have to do a search for a superintendent in our school system? State law? No. Does Hillsborough have a bylaw that says we must do a search when we need a new superintendent? No. Okay. So here's, here's my issue. We have an assistant superintendent who's now an interim superintendent, who's been here for 15 years. The last couple of superintendents we've tried to bring in, they've had their own agendas. They've come in for a couple of years, they raised their pension, and off they go. Hillsborough's not even a thought after they leave. The former superintendent we had came in, and he had some great ideas for himself. His, his raises, you know, on performance and his bonuses on performance that he maxed out, and then he lost, you know, then he up and left, and everybody went boo hoo, and don't worry about him, because he's already working again, and he's perfectly fine, and he's not even thinking of Hillsborough. We have an opportunity, and I don't know Lisa, I don't know her kids, I don't know, I don't know anything about her. I just know, being in the community for 20 years, that I'm going to support her, because if she's been here for 15 years, who knows better than her what's going on in our schools, our kids, our, our staff, everything? So I just don't think we need to spend 20, 30, 50, $100,000 on a search for some foreign company to come in and hand you guys four or six applications, or resumes, excuse me, and applications, and you wouldn't even know them, and then you just interview these six and pull one. I think we have the answer right sitting with us tonight, and I just want to go on record as saying, I could, I could hear negative things about former superintendents. I've never heard a negative thing about Lisa, and I've talked to administrators, I've talked to teachers, I've talked to students. As you all know by now, Big Mouth has a business in town. I see a lot of people constantly, hundreds, thousands, and there's not a negative thing that's said about her, so I don't, I think this is a no-brainer. I don't think there's any reason to spend my hard-earned tax dollars and, and do a search. I think we have a superintendent sitting amongst us. So thanks.
I think this falls under the comments about personnel or hiring decisions, so... Anybody else from the public? Okay, I'll close public comment, and do we have any comments from the board? Seeing none. We do have to go into executive session again, so I will read the executive session bit again, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a body, public body, may exclude the public from the portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: The matter to be discussed is a personnel matter. The matter to be discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. We do anticipate that there may be action taken after public session, after executive session, sorry. So we will return as soon as we can. I think we're, we're going to be about 15, about 15 minutes. So can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're now in executive. Thank you. Thank you. We are now back from executive session. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Dr. Harris? Okay. Mrs. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Mrs. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
Dr. Sasan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a walk-on item, a resolution. I need a motion and a second for this. I will read the resolution just so everybody is aware. I will read the resolution just so everybody is aware. An employee whose name is on file in the superintendent's office is hereby ordered to undergo a fitness-for-duty evaluation before returning to work. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Dr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroon?
Yes.